Mr. Panoni, do we have any report on action taken during closed session?
We don't. Madam Chair, we had two items on the agenda. They were both discussed, but there's no reportable action.
Thank you. For those of you who are here, please stand and join us in our invocation from Pastor Bernie Fetterman, and remain standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Our God, before I ask you to provide for us, we stop to give thanks, to express gratitude for all that you've done for us. Before we seek your guidance and your protection, I pause to thank you for helping us in ways we do not know, and protecting us from things we cannot perceive. Thank you for the freedoms we enjoy, the freedom to worship you, or the freedom to reject you, the freedom to love you as you've loved us and to love others, and sadly even the freedom to withhold our love from others. But help us to learn, to pause, to be grateful for all that you've done, and the goodness in this place that we call home, this Valley of Lompoc. I pray for our leadership of our city, our mayor, our council, our department heads, every employee. May they feel the appreciation from our community for the task and responsibility they carry and the service they provide. And thank you for every person and family, organization, church, that adds value to our community. Continue to give them the resources with which to do good works. And we welcome our new city manager, Jim Throop, and pray that you will guide him, and that he'll be able to quickly assimilate into our community and be welcomed graciously. Assist him in working with our city council, our city leadership, and all employees of our city and our citizens. May his past experiences of leadership, financial management, and life lessons prepare him for successful days ahead for he and our city. Grant this council the ability to work in harmony, to accomplish for good of our community the agenda set before them. And honor all who participate tonight with sound minds, right hearts, listening ears, and powerful wisdom. And God, we also thank you for the diligent dedication and hard work of those men and women who lead our Flower Festival this week. May it be a time of great joy and laughter and fun. May our parade be a reminder of the joys of a smaller town, but also the hard work of others for our benefit. May our community continue to celebrate, but to do so responsibly and with safety. Protect our police and our fire departments as they protect us, and watch over our children this summer, we pray. In your most passionate name, amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And just a reminder for all the new faces, please either turn off or turn to vibrate any of your mobile devices and cell phones that you have with you tonight. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Yes, thank you. Couple items. One, this evening, we are having trouble with our web stream. It is down right now. So we do want to let the community know that the TV and radio is working fine, so you can join in that way. On another note, I did want to give an update on the commercial cannabis application process and where we are with applications we received. We have received 10 applications to date. Eight of those are for dispensaries, one is for manufacturing, and one is for distribution. At the onset of this process, we had a workshop and invited the industry to come and learn about our process. And we shared, our consultant shared with them, and an estimate, we were asked, how long do you think this would take? And it was an estimate. The consultant shared like four to six weeks for a review and an application. And we did give plenty of disclaimer that this was a new process for us, so we really weren't quite certain about that. And as it turns out, it is taking longer than that estimate, our guestimate, that we put forward. But we are making diligent progress. The actual review of the first application didn't start for five weeks after we accepted the application because of some internal work we were doing. We had to complete a very extensive matrix of all the regulations that we need to make sure we are checking from the state in the application process. So that was a very lengthy internal document that we did need to complete before we actually started the review of our very first application. So do you factor that? We would like, you know, to make sure that everybody is aware that that is also part of what is going on in this process. The first four applications that we received are in various points of Stage Three, the final stage in the review process. So that is good news. And the remainder of the six applications are in the initial Stage Two of the process. And after each initial review of each stage, we then send any questions that we have in the application back to the applicant so that they can clarify or review any questions that we have in the process. So there is a back and forth process where we can get better specification on any questions we may have. So like I said, we are working diligently on getting through this process, making it a fair, reasonable review process, and we appreciate the applicant's patience as we work through this. There is a learning curve here on this. This is new to all of us. We encourage applicants to please call us if they have any questions about where their application is in the process. This is very important to us. Your business is important to us like any other business in Lompoc. So please give us a call if you have a concern exactly about where your application is in the process, and we'd be more than happy to speak to you about where that is. So just wanted to share that with you. We are moving along, and like I said, four of them are in the final stage of review. So things are moving forward. On another note, the AIDS lifecycle writers made their way, their annual stop through Lompoc recently on their journey from San Francisco to Los Angeles. This is an annual visit they do, and while they're here, they frequent our businesses. They go to our restaurants. They fill up at our gas stations. They buy all kinds of things in our community. And they also stay in Ryan Park. There was some damage to the tennis courts at Ryan Park, and I know many people in our tennis community put in a lot of volunteer work to spruce the tennis courts up. So we are aware of it. We do have a damage deposit that we will use to make repairs to the courts. So I just want to assure the community and council that we do have that damage deposit, and we'll be making those repairs. It's a very special paint, I understand, we have to get, so it is going to take a little time to do that, but it will be done. And last but not least, we do not have any business that we have to conduct on July 3rd. I wanted to share that with the council in case you would like to consider a journeying to the second meeting in July. I think that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vega?
Teresa, for clarification, if you wouldn't mind, the stages for cannabis for the approval process. If you wouldn't mind, maybe clarify what Stage One, Two, Three, or just at least for Three, and then the outcome and the expected timeframe. It seems like once you get to a Stage Three, you've gone through the gauntlet of quite a few things now. Is there any estimate of timeframe to get from Stage Three to the finish line where an actual license is actually issued?
So the stages are Stage One, they come in, we make sure the application's complete, and that the zoning is proper, and it's not in a buffer zone. Stage Two is going through our consultants. They go through the entire application, and then make sure that they've gone through the matrix that I was discussing that is pretty intensive. And then they send back any questions or concerns to the applicant so they can clarify them. Then it moves to Stage Three, which is the internal departments that may need to review it. Look at the consultant's work and any final questions. And then from there, it moves to the city managers, and it goes back to the applicant. Applicant answers any questions, and then it comes back, and then it gets ready to go to the city manager's desk for final approval. So like I said, there are four in Stage Three right now. The very first application that we received is actually back with the applicant, so they can answer any questions. So that kind of, once we have that back from them, then we can proceed to the last phase of review. I'm a little gun shy about giving an estimate on time, given what happened last time, but I don't think it would be much longer from here.
Thank you. I have one more question here. Since we have damage to the tennis courts regardless of the deposit that we have, are there preventative measures in the future here to keep it from happening again, to keep them from putting whatever it was on the tennis courts?
We certainly can meet with the renters before their next event and discuss how we might be able to arrange things to see if we can do that.
Yeah, I think it would be prudent to not allow the damage again, you know, so thank you.
Councilmember Mosby?
If I can, just real fast, I believe there's a sign up that says courts are for tennis only. So maybe we can try to, you know, really push hard if they're going to do something that, you know, get a carpet or something like that, but I mean, do the best we can to protect those. Okay, thank you.
Not even. We'll work on that.
And if I have council's agreement, I will bring up the July 3rd discussion during council requests in case we would like to consider it. Yes?
No business, no meeting.
Yeah, I'll concur. I think if there's no business, unless you're going to load up on us in the next meeting. I wish you'd disclose that right now. I'll try to take my no do's.
Okay. We'll confirm that during council requests. Thank you, City Manager, for your report. We will now open for a public comment on the consent calendar. That's a maximum of three minutes, and it's regarding any subject that's on the consent calendar. If you'd like to speak to that, please come forward. Consent calendar currently is Items One through Seven. So if it's one of those items, if it's an item that's not on the agenda or not on the future agenda for the evening, wait till the next public comment period.
I'm with the tennis group. I'm the one that wrote that letter. Is that tonight then?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll wait then.
Okay. Thank you. No worries. Anyone looking to make a comment on consent calendar? Seeing no one rise, I will close public comment. The consent calendar is designed to be one motion and have no separate discussion unless a council member asks to have something removed. I would like to remove Item Seven because staff has made me aware that this was not to be included in consent calendar. So I'd like to pull that, and with the council's consent, we will address it immediately following consent calendar. Do I have support?
I'll give you a consent.
Thank you. Is that all I need? One more? That's what I thought.
You have one more.
All right. Thank you, Victor. And so now we were discussing Items One through Six. Is there anything that should be pulled or would like to be pulled from them? All right, I'll take a motion.
I move we accept the consent calendar, Items One through Six.
I'll second.
Let's vote. And that passes 401. Now, moving on to Item Seven. We have the adoption of Resolution 619918, approving the agreement with James Throop for Lompoc City Manager. And Mr. Panoni, would you like to introduce the item?
Thank you, Mayor. The reason this is being pulled off the consent agenda is because the government code is recently modified, and it requires an oral description of what the benefits and pay is for an executive like the city manager. And so the statute is unclear to me. It says the legislative body. So my preference would be for one of you and maybe the presiding officer to read that list that's in the staff report to explain and meet that government code section.
Happy to.
Other than that, you went through a process. You know the process you went through, and we were successful, so.
Thank you. I'd be happy to do that. So to meet the legal requirements, the terms are as follows. Number one, the annual salary is $190,000. Number two, moving, relocation, and temporary housing expenses not to exceed $2,000 upon the city's receipt of proof of actual expenditures. Number three, vehicle allowance of $350,000, sorry, $350 per month. Yeah, panic everybody, right? I want that. Number four, holiday leave for 11 city holidays and one floating holiday per year. Number five, sick leave of 12 days per year with a maximum of 720 hours accrual and payment of 50% of accrued sick leave upon resignation. Number six, vacation leave of 160 hours per year. Number seven, management leave of 64 hours per year. Number eight, payment of pre-authorized professional dues and travel expenses each year. Number nine, a cellphone and laptop computer will be provided for business use. And number 10, health, dental, and retirement benefits as provided to the city management, supervisory, and confidential employees. And just to repeat, it was only $350 per month for the vehicle allowance. So with that being stated, I am happy to have a motion. I will make a motion that we accept this Resolution 6199 and agree to hire James Throop as our Lompoc City Manager. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, let's vote. It is 401. Welcome, Mr. Throop, and we will take a moment for you to come up to the microphone and introduce yourself, and then after that, we will recess for cake.
Thank you, thank you, council. This is, I'm like a kid at Christmas right now. You're getting to the beginning of December, and you're looking through the, well, it used to be the Sears catalog. And now we're at Christmas Eve, and I want to be here now. I want to be ready to go, not wait another few weeks before I can come. So I'm very excited by that. My family knows. I keep talking to my wife every night about what we can do here in Lompoc. The other little analogy I have is I love to cook, and I know my wife is appreciative of that. My kids are appreciative. And one of the things I saw here as we went through this process is Lompoc has all of the right ingredients. They're there to use. They're there to start mixing together and come up with something that's fantastic. So that's sort of my goal, is to get in there in the kitchen with the rest of the team here in the city and start mixing something that's going to really make the city pop and become what it can be. We've lived up on the central coast now for 12-plus years. I was telling someone, I forgot who it was here in the city, that, you know, we have, on my side of the family, my great-grandfather was a Methodist minister up in AG back in 1900, 1902. So we have a little bit of history here, but we loved it. We were planning to stay here the rest of our lives. And I know Lompoc is going to be, it's going to be what it should be here, not too far from now. We'll be much, much happier with what we're seeing. Just reading the different things out there, the needs that we have and the possibilities that are out there. I've had some contact with staff, and it's exciting. I'm just like chills right now. So I'm ready to go and get up here and help everybody.
So stay put, because we now will have our formal presentation. So what do we do for that, Stacy? Because it says, "Presentation, announcement, request. Formally introduce." Anything above and beyond this before we break? It also says, "Council will formally introduce."
One more thing. I want to apologize. I do want to thank, my wife is going to come down, and my three girls, we have four, but my son's out of state. They all called last night and said, "We're all coming down to support you." So for me, that's really big as a family.
Absolutely. Please come up. We would like to meet you. Please come up and join here.
And the other one, when I first got here, and I forgot, I think it was Joe was the first one I saw, and a couple others, and then council members, I thought, "My daughter is going to love this because she loves every Hawaiian shirt that I wear." And I thought, "This is the norm." But this is my wife, Sandy. Our oldest, Taylor is out of state. He's our oldest boy. Then Sydney is our oldest daughter, Haley, and then Jamie.
All right, council would like to welcome you. Councilmember Starbuck.
You love to cook. Did you make the cake?
I have, not this one.
Well, if they're, Councilmember Mosby?
It's simply welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome. And I have time to mingle, and I know there's a lot of people lined up here waiting to meet you, so. Welcome.
Councilmember Vega?
I'd like to say welcome also. Lompoc's a great town. Most of us have grown up here. You'll learn quickly about where we wanted to go and where we need to be, and hopefully you'll be a great asset to help us getting there. So thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here.
Thank you for accepting the offer. You're very, very welcome to be here, and I know we're all excited to start working with you. So how about we recess for some cake? Awesome. All right. Thank you. Cake for all in the lobby. Go eat cake. We will reconvene the city council meeting. Thank you all for meet and greet with our new city manager. We will now move on to oral communications on any topic regarding city matters for three minutes. This would be the time you may speak. If anyone has anything they would like to speak to regarding city matters, please come forward for your three minutes.
Okay. My name is John Hermanson, retired school teacher, taught here 35 years, and of late tennis player, among other things. And the concern that a lot of us have that are here tonight, and a lot of others that couldn't make it because they had other commitments, is that we're hopeful that the city council and our new city manager will be more aware of this situation. And putting a rug across the courts, I don't think is necessary. It's just find another place for those tents and close off the courts. That's basically what we would like to see happen. And then, of course, funding. There's lots of things going on there on the courts, and the fence around it, just lots of problems. Things are deteriorating, and the actual fence is coming loose from the post. The crossposts are so rusted out, they're just hanging on to the fence. So, there's a lot of other problems occurring which had nothing to do with this group. And like I said in my letter, I have nothing against this group coming and using our facilities. I'd just like them to stay off the tennis courts. So...
Thank you. I'm sorry. There's no clapping. There's no clapping or cheering or booing during a council meeting, so please refrain from doing so on any matter. Thank you.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills. I applaud the new city manager's statement. We can help Lompoc shine the way it deserves to. I urge him to take on inefficient and ineffective practices, including bad practices. Please throw under the bus those employees who conspire to destroy Lompoc. Though taxpayers fund city services, volunteers repaired the tennis courts at Ryan Park. The volunteers were promised cameras would be installed to deter vandalism. It was a false promise. The tennis courts were destroyed once again in collaboration with city officials who allowed bicyclists to erect large tents on the courts. Months ago, a dad complained to this body about the poor and dangerous condition of the playing fields at Ryan Park. Park grounds have not improved. A dog show held there for over 40 years had to cancel due to conditions of the grounds at Ryan Park. Some city officials' actions intimidate and harass engaged citizens. Previously addressed by Chief Walsh, Assembly Bill 109 and propositions 47 and 57 erode citizen's safety, property rights, civil rights, and liberty of citizens in California. Relatedly, at a recent school board meeting, a handful of military families described conditions of bullying and sexual abuse so heinous at Lompoc schools. Children who arrived here healthy leave broken and suffering from PTSD. Military families request reassignment, even accepting lower pay just to escape from Lompoc and to safety. Many businesses leave Lompoc. Is selective enhanced code enforcement an issue? Are those who comply with big government the ones that stay or move in? We clearly can't afford to provide services under current conditions. Operating expenses are out of control. Services to citizens are frequently cut back or eliminated altogether. I urge the new city manager to clean house at City Hall. Prioritize citizen services. Eliminate rules, regulations, personnel, and unions which obstruct efficient, effective delivery of city business. Put the shine back on Lompoc. Privatized departments and services were applicable. When the volunteer repaired tennis courts were again damaged as a result of collusion among city officials, a larger message was sent, and it has been received.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. Several times in the past, Councilmember Starbuck has asked for some numbers with regard to the amount of money that's flowed into Lompoc as a result of Safe and Sane fireworks sales. So, I took the time to go pull these numbers, and I couldn't get 2013, so I only got four years. But if you, and I'm sorry for the audience, I didn't have time to make a PowerPoint slide. Over those four years, $24,000 has been paid to the city in surcharges. So, those are fees to cover the cost of monitoring six fireworks booths. $42,385 has been paid in to supplement police services to try to knock down the amount of illegal fireworks used in town. And perhaps most importantly, $62,000 has been donated as a result of the resolution this council passed from the nonprofits to fund the stadium show. So, over the course of four years, $129,000 has flowed into the community. And you'll recall when we passed this some time ago, and Dirk, it's you and me that's left, we had some basic ideas about what we wanted it to do. Number one, we wanted to replace the donations that businesses were making to keep the stadium show alive because it was no longer funded by the general fund. And so, that has been the case for the last five years. We haven't had to go out and ask for donations to cover the difference between ticket sales and the cost of putting on the show. And then, we wanted to provide fireworks here in town where people wouldn't be criminals. They could take Safe and Sane fireworks and shoot them off in their yard. And what I found driving around was that people were out in their front yards, not so much in their backyards, and they were hanging around with their neighbors, and everybody brought their fireworks over. And people who never knew each other before and had lived next to each other for years, sometimes decades, became friends. We wanted to cover the cost of the city administrative process to handle this, which we've done, and we wanted to provide at least $10,000 a year to enhance enforcement. And then, as a council, we agreed to have a citation process for those individuals who continued to use illegal fireworks when there was something safe, sane, and legal available, and that is ongoing. So, I would say that we reached all of our objectives and what we set out to do, and now you have the numbers. Thank you very much.
Any more public comments? Seeing none, I will close oral communications. We now have appointments. The only appointment that will actually be made tonight is for the Economic Development Committee. The Human Service Commission appointment won't be made tonight. So, we have one nominee. So we have one nomination of Ed Braxton. There are four potential positions to fill. One is an at-large term ending December 2020 to be appointed by Councilmember Mosby. There's one at-large position term ending 2022, and there are two associate positions term ending 2020. Do I have a nomination? Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I'd like to point to Ed Braxton to my position, my at-large position, term ending December 2020.
Do I have a second?
I'll give a second.
Thank you. Let's vote. And that passes 401. Number nine on the appointments is designation of voting delegate and alternate for League of California City's annual conference. Before I open it to the floor, I will let council know that I am registered to attend, so I'd be happy to act as either voting delegate or alternate. Is there anyone else who is planning to attend who would like to be considered? Councilmember Starbuck.
Since Mayor Lingle isn't here, let's put him as the alternate.
Okay. So I take it that as a motion, I be the delegate and Mayor Lingle the alternate?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. And did I hear you were going to second that, Mr. Vega?
Yes.
All right. Any discussion? Let's vote. And that is a 401 as well. We will now move to public hearings. Item number 10 is the Public Hearing Regarding Nuisance, Abatement of Weeds, Rubbish, Refuse, and Dirt, the Adoption Resolution for Number 6193 (18). And we have Italian Chief Dina Paschke to present to us tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Council, and our citizens of Lompoc. We're here at the second notice of our weed abatement program. It's an annual program. So we have here tonight a public hearing to receive comments and information from the public to show cause to why we're declaring something a nuisance, and also an adopt resolution 6193-18 ordering that the fire marshal will abate nuisances as declared May 15, 2018 by Resolution 6181. Not otherwise satisfactory, corrected in the time and manner provided by law. So a little background for declaring the weeds and the debris unidentified parcels as public nuisance. The fire department, we did mail notices to all the owners and parcels. In fact, we had to get some of the assessors' information to update because our system sometimes can be over a year and a half old. We did inform the property owners that if they abated the nuisances by June 15, 2018, the city of Lompoc would not impose the administrative fees or special assessments authorized by the Government Code section. Then I have just a real brief PowerPoint to show a little bit of what has been done So we have some work in progress. We have some clearance completed. We have a scope of work identified with a few parcels. We have some partnerships already established, and overall, this is a part of our community risk reduction to make our town more resilient from fire. We know we've all been tried by different fires every year from a different direction. So one of the questions ahead, last meeting, was regarding the gas station near McDonald's. And we actually had people come from Bakersfield. They arrived yesterday. I was a little worried this morning when I didn't see anything look like it was clearing, but they were working in the back part of the parcel, which you're seeing here now. And they will be completed with this tomorrow, so that is good news. We have some opportunities to help sound our borders where we have some interfaces, such as over on Western Avenue, there's a bike path. And this was in May when I was doing the first set of inspections. You can see it's pretty gloomy. We had, you know, high moisture content, which we want to get the weeds and the grass out of the way before we get into the high fire season. So you can see it's a little dark, a little gloomy, but we had, this is the bike path. We actually had a bunch of brush, some chmeis, coyote brush, laurel sumac encroaching on the bike path. And you can't even see the wrought iron. In fact, here's the marquee that would delineate that there's a wetland on the other side that's quite overgrown. So I had opportunity to meet with the HOA. They were very receptive, and we've had, in fact, there was a gardening company out there putting the finishing touches even today as we speak. So if we look at it now, we can see a fence. We have some clearance. People could ride their bike by. There's, you know, the hazards kind of been removed from them, and that also goes with some rodents and some pests, or maybe some snakes as it heats up. So that bike path's a lot clearer. We did have the Briar Creek Park. Now, that's been in for a few years. We've had that development there. This is actually a willow that's grown through the wrought iron fence and starting to encroach on the ball fields that we really want to remove. It's, again, it was a gloomy day, but you could see it's pretty dense over there. We think we're a city, but we have quite a bit of fuel. This is removing the fuel back through the fence, and now we can actually see the curb and the border of what that ball field should have been like. So it's been very positive in this area. And if you look here, this is what we look for beside homes. This would probably be an ideal. This is over on the side of Briar Creek Park as well. You have trees limbed up, so now you have a separation of fuels. Even if the grass dried out, it's not going to torch right up into a tree. And when you spread that out along houses, that gives the fire department a lot more time and opportunity to help protect you. We do have some areas that are still kind of working on it, and they know that we have some deadlines that are upon us. So I've been at this lot. This is across from Home Depot. The owner is quite distant, but their property management is in San Luis. There's a big hazard tree right there. It's dead pine. They're going to have a tree removal service. They haven't gotten to it yet. It's tangled in a bit of electrical line, so it's a little hazard. They're also going to work on that mustard. This is a large lot on East Walnut. Not only did they clear the lot and didn't provide some cover for some activities that they were very worried about, they're starting to actually secure the lot, which this would be a great benefit for our neighbors over in this area, so there's not any activity that's unwanted beside them. This is a little dark, but you could see there's an apartment complex right beside it. We do have lots that are in the middle of town that get six feet tall with weeds, so it's, this is a good thing that we've reduced the risk after we cut down those weeds. Here is over near the hospital. This is, this was today. You could see a six-foot chain-link fence. So one lot has been mowed, the other one is six feet tall. So that lot is clearly still on the list, and that's one of the things we're looking to remove before that is completely dried out. This is backed up same. We also had a little bit of help over near Crestview Terrace from our Santa Barbara County parcel, large parcel owner. It's, you could see the hillside's a little reddish, a little brown as the grass is cured. The lower parts, yellow, that's actually where they ran a mower along the hillside. Our drought monitor, however, we had the March Miracle rains. This was all purple and brown last year, so we're actually getting better. We're not out of the drought yet, but at least it's getting better. We don't let our guard down, let alone after, you know, being on a fire in Christmas. Pictures of, the bottom right is a fire that our unit was on in Santa Barbara while the other three are here in town. Okay, so I will go back to my, so I want to show a little bit of pictures to just kind of see where we're at and see that this is actually making impact in our town. And for tonight, we're looking to proceed with the abatement of the public nuisance, and it's necessary for the city council to hear any objectives or clearing weeds of any of the parcels. It also mentions rubbish and refuse dirt. Sometimes we do see some discarded stuff. It's not like the riverbed discarded, but we do have, sometimes we have piles of stuff. If good cause is shown why the weeds of certain parcels should not be abated, the city council may sustain the objection or remove the parcel from the list. Prior to the lean of any process, there is a government code, so there is a, the property owner has the opportunity, if we have to come in and pay our contractor through the city to clear their weeds, they have the opportunity to pay that bill directly. We do bill them. If they choose not to pay that bill, even though the city's used it out of general fund to cover it in the interim, it will have to go to part of the teeter plan, and that winds up being part of next year's property taxes through the county where we recover our cost. With that, there's a little bit of a cost to do it through the county, and we have an administrative fee that gets added. That's literally my last resort. I try not to do that. I think we maybe, out on Badger, I had a couple lots that I had to do that with. So what we're looking for tonight is to have a direction from the council, and I do want to update on our current list on the addendum. So we had 14 of those already done that's on that 42. I have another 10 that have already worked with the owners that's scheduled, so it leaves me 18. Some are redundant owners. Some were owners that were out of town that are getting, they're saying they're getting the certified notices after they return back from vacations and stuff. So we're probably talking about five or so right now that I'd have to go a little bit further to really encourage them. If not, then this is our fallback position to make sure we remove that hazard. So with that, here for any questions or assistance I could be for council.
Councilmember Mosby.
I think 1641 West Central Avenue has been bought and sold?
It has, and it's up for sale again, so I'm trying to chase down the current owner. The owner at the time was who it went to, so yes. In fact, I have the phone number of the current listing agent to try and help with that process. I did a 360 around it today, and there's a lot of vehicles. That one does have a lot of debris and stuff. So if we get a new owner in there, that might really help, and we won't be in this situation next year. Probably a bad timing.
So who do you notice then on that? If the owner you have listed here, are you noticing that owner that's no longer the owner, or what do you?
I've noticed the new owner as well, but this was a capture in time prior, so we have to post it a certain amount of time ahead of time, so it won't always show the adjusted owner once we get information.
So should we take that one off the list, then?
The parcel's still valid, and the letter, the owner's not listed in this addendum with the new owner.
Are you sending it to the parcel or the old owner, the notice?
I'm sending one to the new owner as well.
Right, but we didn't identify the name of that. I guess you, if you don't have a mailing address, I'm just getting it, you're getting to the bottom of it, if we're proving this, we're proving something that you're not really doing, then.
It's the parcel and the current owner, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Vega.
Dina, I guess my question is with the true vine Bible fellowship here with the congregation and everything, I mean, is there any, has there been contact at all with?
Absolutely. I've been up there working with one of their office staff. I've been up there three times. They're actually one of the done, so they have a really steep hillside behind them in a very high hazardous condition. So we've had a few years since they've been built. They cleaned out what they needed to, and they're already complete. They've been wonderful to work with.
Good, thank you very much.
They needed me to go out there and point out what I was looking for, so.
Gotcha. I know they have a lot of help out there if they probably just pointed in the right direction. That's why I asked. Thank you.
Any more questions for Italian Chief Paschke? Okay, we'll open this up for public comment. Seeing no one rise, we'll close public comment. If you have a public comment, you must come to the microphone.
I'm just curious about what's being done about a lot of the trees that are encroaching upon tons of wires, most of them the lower ones in some areas of town, like when I was at my, my stepson's home the other day, I noticed, to me, that's a fire hazard right there. If all these trees, does the fire department address that at all?
If we're pointed out to a hazard so we can go to the site and make an assessment, we'd be happy to help. I'm sure City Electric would be happy to help as well, if they assess whether it's high voltage transmission or maybe even cable.
It's probably cable.
All right, that's all.
Thank you.
I'll check with you later.
So if anyone has concerns, basically you should contact the city, and they will direct you to the right department in order to make an appointment for an assessment to be made. Correct? Okay. So we are closing public comment if I don't see anyone else rise. Okay. Any discussion by council, or I will entertain a motion. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation.
Do I have a second?
I will second.
Mr. Vega seconds. Any other discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 401. Thank you. Item number 11 is consideration of a planning commission recommendation regarding a text amendment adding Chapter 17.130 to the Lompoc Municipal Code relating to food services special use permits in the wine ghetto, and introduction of ordinance number 1650 (18). And a presentation will be made by our planning manager, Brian Halverson.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience. It's my pleasure to bring this item back to you, and I want to apologize that it took a little bit longer than we anticipated, but we are back to talk about the wine ghetto and specifically a special use permit. I want to give just a little bit of history as I present this item. First of all, a little bit of project background. Some may be aware of this background, others may not, but the wine ghetto is an industrial area, and it is zoned industrial and business park. Most of the parcels out there are zoned industrial, the Zodovich, and there's one off Chestnut that's business park. There's about 20, maybe 19 tasting rooms in that area alone. Over a series of years, there's been a desire to introduce food. We actually, last year, did a survey, too, where over 671 people were, responded to that survey, and there was a consensus that they want food in that area. Also, last year, a temporary use permit was kind of a method that they wanted to introduce and see if that could work as a way to introduce food in the wine ghetto. That was not the right permit, and the council directed staff to come back with another process. Hence, tonight, we have the process of a special use permit. And just to go back to the temporary use permit, usually that's for a 72-hour event. It could also be things like pumpkin sales, Christmas tree sales, maybe even a sale for a retail store for 72 hours. I think we're all familiar with the wine ghetto, but just a map to show the borders that we will come back to if we need to look at any particular site. The special use permit that is a text amendment before you this evening does not allow a restaurant or commercial kitchen. Just real quickly explaining that is we're not changing the zone. The zone would still be industrial, still would be business park. We're not changing any of the land uses, although I'll talk in a minute about the zoning ordinance will be changing the land uses, but tonight, we're just introducing the special use permit. No food trucks also will be allowed. Of course, special events through a temporary use permit, you could have food truck events like we have here out in front of City Hall. Sometimes we have a food truck fest, so that could be an option. Staff will put together just a simple application for the special use permit, and I wanted to note a small error in the report that I wrote. The fee was quoted as $1,000, and it went to the planning commission as $1,000. We removed the $1,000, and it's probably going to be more similar to a temporary use permit, which is about $250. So I think that will help because there was some concerns about the cost of this permit being a little too high. Also, we would do our best to streamline that within a 14-day period after it's deemed complete to issue that special use permit. Some of the food services that would be offered would be prepackaged, pre-prepared foods, delivery of foods to those locations, of course, not served from a food truck, and foods brought to the location by a caterer also could be part of that. It is, it is a temporary permit, as you see here on the screen, but there are some things that I wanted to bring up that the planning commission discussed last month. It was intended to be an interim permit, or it is, before the zoning code is completed. Now, the planning commission, when they heard this item last month, they liked it, and they thought that this option should be available in the new zoning code. For example, if a wine tasting room didn't have, the assets didn't have really the capital to do a restaurant, which is going to be expensive, it's going to most likely require upgrading water and sewer lines, and a lot of improvements to the building, the planning commission wanted them to have this as an option if they didn't want to do a restaurant. Instead of just this or a restaurant, it could be a combination of both. Also, part of staff's job was to not only craft this, and I want to thank the attorney who did a lot of this, but also route it to the various departments. And when we routed it to the departments, they wanted it, the Fire and Building Department wanted that area for food services to be limited to 749 square feet so that an occupancy change would not occur. Parking and wastewater, as I mentioned at the beginning of my presentation, this is an industrial park. It was built as an industrial park, and I think I even brought it up at the workshop last month that parking is limited. So as part of that application, the special use permit, the planners would look at the parking, make sure that doesn't impact their neighbors. And also, as we routed to the various departments, if there needs to be anything like a grease interceptor or baseline- various departments, if there needs to be anything like a grease interceptor or baseline monitoring port, most likely both of those will be required, that would be the time to ask for it as part of that permit. And just kind of a couple conclusions here, the planning commission on May ninth adopted resolution eight eighty-four parentheses eighteen recommending a zoning code text amendment to allow food services with a special use permit. They also recommended a reduced fee, and I think we've handled that, although in the report, you'll see a citation there for the, the thousand dollars, but in the ordinance before you this evening, that thousand dollars has been removed. Also, as I mentioned earlier in my presentation, the planning commission would like to recommend to the city council to have the option for the food services special use permit in the zoning code. And tonight, if we get direction to do that, I would then direct our consultant, our zoning consultant, to change that zoning code, that hopefully we're going to hearings in August, and then you would see that in that hearing draft of the proposed zoning code. Lastly, as you see in your, your agenda this evening, you're here to consider the recommendation of the planning commission, which I just, I just summarized. We're introducing ordinance one six five zero parentheses eighteen approving a text amendment adding chapter seventeen point one three zero to the Long Pocono Municipal Code for food services special use permits in the wine ghetto. And lastly, if you could provide direction regarding incorporation of that special use permit updated zoning code, or provide other direction. That concludes my presentation, and I also just wanted to make sure there was a couple comments that I received via email today. I think you got a copy of that, so if you have any questions about those comments or my presentation, I'm now available.
Councilmember Vega.
Brian, yes, right, the letter that was referencing the fact that food trucks wouldn't be allowed, maybe you could explain here, the special use permit is, you're asking for this to be incorporated into the new zoning ordinance, but this is going to take effect sooner rather than later, is that correct? It's just another method for, for them to have food here a little bit sooner? Is that correct? I mean, maybe you can interject a little bit for the public.
Sure. So we've directed our consultant to amend the zoning ordinance to allow food trucks. We did not include it in the ordinance this evening simply because that was not the original direction and the fact that the code was going to be amended. We wanted to wait for the new zoning ordinance because there's development standards, and the consultant had come up with development standards for those food trucks that we weren't really prepared to put in the ordinance now. Other than that, that's pretty much how it's written. You know, I reviewed it with staff, and the food truck option just never was really the direction that we, we were given, but we certainly got that direction for the new zoning code, so that will be part of the, basically the industrial district, so not just the wine ghetto, but other areas, as well as other areas of town could have food trucks if they meet those certain parameters of, of standards.
I think, I think that's important that you clarified that because we're not just looking specifically at the wine ghetto, it was to incorporate that whole special use permit within all the city limits, is that correct, what you just said? For any special, for any special events?
Well, that, that wasn't.
In an industrial setting.
Yeah, we should talk about that, but that was not my understanding. The original direction that I thought, and I think I had a conversation with councilmember Osborne, was just for the wine ghetto, but certainly if that's the direction that's given this evening, we can certainly amend the ordinance, but it was our understanding that it was for just the wine ghetto, the special use permit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff at the moment?
Mr. Halverson, the original discussion, and I, it was hard to see, and so if you could clarify for me, there was some discussion about that this was a tasting room that was going to be getting this license, and instead we have made sure that it's an independent group that can get this license, or are we still saying you have to be associated with a tasting room with this ordinance?
Yeah, it does talk about that in the ordinance, it has to be related to the wine business, it's not supposed to be independent. But yeah, that was the intent, is for it to be wine, I believe it says wine-related, but it is supposed to, it's not supposed to just be an isolated permit.
Okay, so that's where it does short, fall short for me, is that this was an appeal by individuals who wanted to be able to do food service but not be a winery, and it was the wineries not looking to themselves want to be also food service. So, so for me, that's where this falls down, is that it, it fails to meet that separation of it not having to be a winery having to do this. If there was an individual who wanted to come in and rent a very small space over there and set up something like a deli with, you know, warming, you know, panini warmers or pizza oven, I'm, I'm afraid they're not able to do it with this. Is that, is that what I'm understanding? Is that, that's not allowed by this?
Well, let me go ahead and just read what the ordinance says. It says the food services shall be an accessory use provided in conjunction with an operation providing the wine tasting, wine processing, production, wine storage, or other use directly related to the wine industry. So it, it's in conjunction. So if they took a tenant space and it was just only food service, I mean, I guess we could write something in that, in the ordinance that addresses that, but it was supposed to be in conjunction. So like you go and you sit down, you have a glass of wine, and they serve food at the same time.
Right, but what I'm clarifying is from the discussion last March, not this prior March, but the, a year and a half ago, the discussion and the appeal, and one of the things that, that I drove this conversation with regarding was that the tasting rooms themselves, this is one way to solve it, but if the tasting rooms themselves did not want to be a food service provider, they wanted a, the opportunity for someone who wanted to come in and be a food service provider to be able to set that up independently. So that, that's my one issue with this. I understand that the food trucks can still come in with a temporary seventy-two hour permit, and, and that they can be hosted by the different wineries for special events, so I'm, and that our long-term zoning update allows for food trucks. It's more that this was the interim for some individuals who had a desire to set up something very small and serve food and be an independent business, not attached to a winery. So, so that's my concern with the way it's currently written.
Councilmember Vega.
I have to concur, I think that my thought process was also going that same direction, to allow the special use permit to be utilized by other individuals outside of the wine industry. I think just like a special event, similar to what we had in front of City Hall, I guess that's my mindset, but in a private setting, so maybe you can provide a little bit of information on maybe how we can accomplish that, or does that throw you off a little bit, being that we're adding that? Okay, Brian, you know?
No, it doesn't throw me off. So are you saying outside the wine ghetto, or are you still focusing on that it's not in conjunction with the wine tasting room or production or processing?
Yeah, I, I think it should be outside the wine ghetto also. That would be my direction, unless councilwoman Osborne has another clarification, but I think that special use permit should be extended to the wine ghetto and outside.
So the only place I differ with you regarding that, councilmember Vega, is this was a temporary fix just for the wine ghetto area because the long-term fix for all industrial spaces is coming with the zoning update. So my preference would be just for it to be in the wine ghetto, that it just addressed the issue of food availability and the ability for it to be an, an independent business rather than it being attached to a winery. So that, that would be my one preference, is that the language change in order to allow it to be an individual business rather than forcing it to be a winery that's, that's doing this.
Yes, I agree with that, that thought process.
Could I, could I ask a question for, just for clarification, to make sure I understood what is being said? Are you saying that the suggestion is to have the food service be in a building or a space in a building that doesn't also include a winery? Or are you just saying you'd want to have an independent contractor be able to contract with the winery and provide that service in the winery?
So it could be the independent contractor in a winery, but I also understood from the appeal from the, the wine industry was that some of them don't want to deal with that and want to be able to encourage someone to come in and rent, rent one of the very small spaces over there and be able to be a deli or a pizza oven place on its own without being attached to one of the wine industries. So that's what this was the ability to do, was to allow someone, because there were, there were individuals who wanted to come in and just start a small deli or, but not be attached to a winery, because that then requires the wineries and the tasting rooms to reassess their space and potentially lose space to their customers. And this, this, this request was, can we allow small space for someone to come in and set up their own business in order to serve the, the wine ghetto as a whole?
We'll need to investigate that because I'm thinking the fire and building may have a concern about if, if the only thing happening in the space is food service, that may change the occupancy designation of that space. The reason it was okay the way it is now is because it's an incidental use to another use.
Exactly, and that, that was part of my discussion with, with Brian earlier about this, was that it doesn't actually solve the problem, so I, I, I'm very, it's very likely that this permit process is being put in place, and you will see no one take it up on it because there are many wineries who are not going to allow for that additional space to be taken up by somebody setting up for food. We could try it, but I just know from all the feedback and from the long-term discussion that that was not the intent for this request for special permit.
If I may add, then, you may want to take this in two steps because, because that's a significant change to what the planning commission reviewed, we're going to have to go back to the planning commission to have the planning commission review that change in having a separate space be used for food service. So maybe an approach may be if, if the council wants to, is to go forward with this, with direction to also come back with the additional.
Okay. Thank you for that recommendation. Councilmember Mosby.
Yeah, I believe what the SUP was, was to be an expedited process with a small amount of money for a precursor, so to say, restaurant, not really a restaurant, but like I said, or prepackaged, pre-prepared foods, to allow the people kind of, so to say, get their foot in the door with some food. The, the zoning update was, was doing and is planned to do much what you guys were asking for, and that's what we're planning to have done by November, was the larger level movement. This is to have the lowest of impacts, so it doesn't trigger large level evaluations. This is something that would be done over the counter in fourteen days with two hundred and fifty bucks. So this was, this was like the precursor that was asked for, maybe, we started the rumblings probably two or three years ago to get to this point. I think we went down the direction of a, of a sign program, but this is just the, the pre-establishment of something, something relatively simple, whether it's the deli case on the counter type of thing, and something that's a little bit larger, that's why you're allowed to have the prepackaged, pre-prepared foods. So it wasn't being the full-blown kitchen, which what is trying to do later on in the, in the full zoning update. So this was just to try to, sort of say, push the easy button a little bit, I think, right, Mr. Halverson?
Yeah, I think that's an accurate assessment. I think the other thing that maybe staff was looking at, if you just had a little space of prepackaged foods, pre-prepared foods, it seemed a little different than, say, you're already there drinking wine and you wanted to complement the food, the wine with the food. So we didn't, we weren't really thinking that, and maybe I misunderstood, but that it would be standalone, because that almost, almost like a quick stop, or I don't want to say that a quick stop, but it was supposed to be, you know, for the people drinking wine or making wine and things like that.
Yeah, this is the next level beyond some little crackers and some little nuts, little things that you cleanse in your palaces, was the next step up with a relatively easy. This wasn't going to the, the standalone, independent restaurant. That's something that's, that would be moving on later in the zoning, they were trying to make through in, in November. That's what we had at the zoning workshop, that communication and stuff, doing that. So this, I would support this as written and as a program that could go forward because I think it's, it is another tool in the arsenal, both for, for planning department and for the people who want, sort of say, baby step their way into this movement, that's, that's what this is. This isn't, you're not going to, for two hundred and fifty dollars and a fourteen day permit, you're not going to get a full-blown restaurant. This is that first level of movement to the next thing. So this is, to go beyond the, the cheese and cracker sort of thing and go to the next level, so.
Also, just to add, some of the input that I'm receiving from the wine community is they'd rather just go straight to the restaurant, but I think not being a downer, but because it's so expensive to do that, a, a lot of tasting rooms might actually like this because it's not going to cost a lot of money. It's going to be something that's going to be easy for them, so, you know, wastewater and water lines and, and doing all those expensive TI work in the building, that this could be a good option, and that's why we, as directed, brought it, brought it back.
Councilmember Vega, Starbuck.
Brian, you know, I mean, this is very specific to the wine ghetto overlay, so even if it was a standalone deli, no wine, if they stayed within the seven hundred and forty-nine square foot of public space, the occupancy wouldn't change, and the use would be the same as anywhere else. I mean, we could include it with the same parameters, couldn't we?
I would defer to the, the building or, or building department or.
Well, they're the ones that you said determined the seven hundred and forty-nine square foot, so what would the difference be if it has a wine bottle or a sandwich?
Well, because it's standalone, I, I think I'd just like for them to weigh in on that because it would be standalone and not in, as, as, as Joe said, it's not incidental, it's standalone, and that's the, the primary use.
Yeah, well, in an industrial space, only fifteen percent is allowed for tasting and eating anyhow, so I mean, seven hundred and forty-nine would be a pretty good stretch on a big space. So I mean, it could be included under the same verbiage of the glass blower wanted to have sandwiches, he could probably get away with doing it in there, separate of wine. Right?
I mean, that's a possibility, I, I think it would have to, like Joseph said, go back to the planning commission, and, and they would need to look at that for standalone. I, I guess the other thing that's kind of difficult is we're not changing the zoning, and so, again, if it was incidental, then it's not really a factor, but if you're going into a space and that's the only thing you're doing, it's not an allowed use. So we kind of struggled with that, and that's why we came up with an interim, and that's why we came up with an incidental to complement the wine.
But because this is an overlay for the wine ghetto specifically, it wouldn't affect industrial use throughout the whole city, just this wine ghetto though, so I mean, it could be written into this almost.
Yeah, and rewriting it and going back to planning commission, I will say that, on the positive note, the, the new zoning ordinance is not going to be limited to the ghetto. It's, it's industrial, all the industrial, both business park and industrial, so it's wide open. But again, that's restaurant, so.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other questions for staff, we'll open this up for public comment.
Good evening again, John Lind on behalf of the Parks Foundation. I think you're all familiar with the olive trees at the end of the PG&E property, and we had a conversation with PG&E several times, and they would just be delighted to lease that to a community organization so they wouldn't have to maintain it. And part of the issue that we had in trying to make anything happen there with food and wine was that we couldn't have food. So if you would be so kind as to draw that little red line around that bit of parcel, I don't think it's going to change anything with these guys over here, that would solve that problem and might allow us to move forward with the project that we never could make happen because of the restrictions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, Councilman Duane Holmdahl, I've been here waiting about six years now, this came up six years ago to try and get it done, and I hope we get it done tonight. There's one issue you may want, I don't know, to talk about, you keep talking about the wine ghetto, wine tasting rooms. What's coming down the road is the brew tasting rooms. So you may want to put beer with the wine, how we set it up, because they're coming on, because the winery industry took, took away from the breweries, a lot of that stuff, and so what, what they did is handle a lot of it, and then all of a sudden, I hear the brewer, wine brewery, beer breweries are out brewing and stuff. So you may want to take a look at that, 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 they're part of it, it's a brew, not just wine. I hope this thing gets done, because six years ago we started this, and it's taken a long time to get done, and they wanted food around there other than trucks, so I think, I hope you get this put together as soon as possible.
Thank you.
Deb Andrews, Mission Hills, I want to call your attention specifically to the letter from Tom Davidson. He made a lot of good points. I concur with him, and I think it's important to rethink why there has to be so much micromanaging of something like this. I'm not a developer, but I had a client that was a developer, and it seems to me that it should be opened up as much as possible so people that have ideas for business could come in and set up. The role of government is health and safety, and beyond that. come in and set up. The role of government is health and safety and beyond that. Don't pick and choose winners and losers. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no one else rise, I will close public comment and we can return to council discussion. So I absolutely agree with you, Councilmember Mosby, that this was an interim and that this does fix it and it is with the $250 change, if that's the actual amount, that it reduces it from the thousand. The problem is, is that it doesn't open the door as much as it had hoped to in the interim. So I will happily support this as it is with the hope that we could bring back for consideration, the allowance of a deli counter. Walk in, pick up a sandwich, walk back out, not worrying about sit-down occupancy, more of a counter service to walk in, place orders and walk away. So I would like that to go back to the planning commission as a consideration, the limitation in size. I understand all of their reasonings for doing everything. I appreciate them reducing the cost to allow it and encourage it. I understand that our zoning update goes much further and allows much broader use and that this is an interim fix. I just know from my conversations, both with Tom Davidson and other Ventners, that their concern was this puts it back in their lap one more time to take away from their space. So I will support this, but I'd like to consider having the planning commission evaluate a standalone opportunity at some level. And thank you to Mr. Lynn. I concur that adding the PG&E property to the zoning as an ability to potentially be leased by someone for picnic tables or eating area would be a great idea. Any other? Councilmember Mosby.
Is there complications with adding that on to the city attorney and Mr. Albersen?
That too would be a zoning amendment. So we'd have to go through the same-
Through the zoning, okay.
We could take them together though.
But my, my suggestion is move forward with what is written as here and make sure the movements that you want to make forward with when the zoning update comes forward as we're progressing. I think we have, do we have any more workshops, Mr. Albersen?
The workshops are actually over. Next step is to go to hearings. So probably have two planning commission hearings and then two city councils. So we've already had-
We have four more meetings and four more opportunities to make sure what you're talking about is done in the zoning. This is, this is a special quick permit that you're trying to get. This is what, tried to come forward with a, with a TUP. That didn't work. So you came back with the SUP to fill the void. So I think this, without complicating and confusing the alignments, we're kind of going, we're trying to get there in more than one way. But this is a way, you know, I would support what you have written here and I'd also like to see it not just be as a temporary measure, but something that'd be incorporated in the zoning code. So you're asking for a recommendation on both?
Right, right. And we could incorporate, Councilmember Osborne, as far as that situation where it's a standalone in the updated zoning code. I mean, that's certainly something we can work with a consultant. We're actually meeting with them next week. And so we could have that as a discussion item and see if we can work that in where it's a standalone. As long as, you know, the council is directing us to do that.
Thank you. Any more?
I was willing to make that as a motion, but Councilmember Vega wants to-
No, no, no. It's good.
So your motion is to take the recommendation and also provide direction to incorporate into the zoning update?
Yes.
Councilmember Vega.
I was going to give him a second on that one because I concur. As long as we do it short-term, I think you guys were convincing enough to say that we need to have some sort of action. That's what our goal was. Just wanted to make sure that we expand. There's been a few people, and there's good points here. Wine businesses throughout the city and, and I think that they all deserve an equal chance of success in serving food and minimizing the safety aspect of drinking and whatever else goes with it. So I think that's, that's a good thing. And then the other comment was a good thing that we heard on public comment as we do reference, you know, someone's mentioned the breweries that's coming someday. We may have some beer pairing and things in the future. So that's something to keep in mind. So anyway, I've given you a second on that motion, sir.
Any further discussion? And then let's vote. And that passes for 01. All right. Now we move on to unfinished business, item number 12, the adoption of Resolution 6192, parentheses 18, to join Santa Barbara County Home Investment Partnership Consortium to federal fiscal years 2019, 2021. And our interim, well, actually, our interim city manager is going to make the presentation. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I just wanted to go through this. I'm sorry, Kristy wasn't able to join us and I'm going to go ahead and give you just an overview and a nutshell of what this is about. This item actually really relates to our tenant-based rental assistance program. As you know, we started the tenant-based rental assistance program a few years ago and we use, we are currently using old state home funding that we have to run that program. It's an important program in that, if you recall, at the State of the City address, we had a couple of videos of people that were assisted with the program that were homeless, sleeping on a couch in somebody's home or would have become homeless. So it is an important part of us and the work that we do to address homelessness in our community. The state funding source that we are using currently is a finite amount and we don't have any new home money coming in to replenish it. So that program will go away soon unless we come up with a new funding source. That just so happens that the county has let us know there is an opportunity to join the home consortium and we would receive approximately $150,000 a year as part of that that can be used for this program. I will give a little background because I know that we, many years ago, we went ahead and we became an our own entitlement city and we, we used to be a member of the CDBG Urban County Partnership and the Home Consortium. Those are two separate programs that the city of Lompoc was part of with the county and various other cities. And council asked us to take a look at becoming an entitlement city for CDBG again. And we did that. And when we did that, we no longer were members of the CDBG Urban County Partnership. And at that same time, the home program, a different program, we also left that consortium. Since then, we have not been receiving any home funding since then. And the county also cannot use its home funding within our city limits. So there is this opportunity now to, to join up with the rest of the partnership. And again, the funding would go specifically towards this program so that we could continue to assist in our efforts to address homelessness in our community. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Excuse me. Teresa, I feel it's very important that we make this very clear because I was very involved at one point with us in the removal of the, out of the home consortium. If we pass this, we still are going to be independent and we will retain our title as an entitlement city. No effect there. Our CDBG is still going to be just us and not through the county. This is only going to be on the home aspect of it, totally separate.
That is correct. Councilmember Starbuck.
Thank you.
Councilmember Vega.
Got you. Teresa, before when we decided to be our own entitlement city, I believe it was because we, we thought we could go and get the money independently. Is that correct? I mean, there were other grant programs or other options that wouldn't have us tied to this consortium. I believe that what was happening, some of these numbers that allowed other people to qualify was basically Lompoc and Guadalupe as far as numbers are concerned to, you know, which actually, I believe it probably upped the numbers in other cities. Okay. With, with Santa Maria or Santa Barbara, maybe you can clarify if my memory is correct, that there was a reason we, we removed ourselves from this consortium and went to an entitlement city because of the restrictions and probably because of the cost of the admin to the county.
So it absolutely, we did become an entitlement city and we left the consortium because there were, it was a good thing for the city to do as far as working directly with, on our own entity for CDBG entitlement. So we don't have the additional administration for that part of that program through the county. You're absolutely right on that. As far as the home consortium, that is different than the CDBG Urban County Partnership.
Got you. But it looks like now if we were to get involved in there again, it sounds like we could take the admin of the program out of the money for the city of Lompoc. Is that correct? Because the admin before is being administered by the county. Is that correct? By, by joining the consortium again? They'll be coordinating this program?
So currently for the home consortium, the administration is still through the county. We would be a recipient of the funds. We will administer our own tenant-based rental assistance program, just like we are now. So it really becomes a funding source that, that the county still administers that. As far as CDBG, which I think is the, the part that where we became an entitlement city, leaving the Urban County Partnership, now we are taking care of our own administration and are not reliant on the county to administer that.
I got you. And just to clarify, it looks like the funding source is 150,000. That's pretty much guaranteed is why the recommendation is that we again sign up and join the consortium. Is that correct?
Yes. And then we can continue to do our tenant-based rental assistance program.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Teresa, the tenant-based rental assistance, is that the only use that we're entitled to use these home funds for?
The, the other aspects are for affordable housing. But I know that we have been very successful with the tenant-based rental assistance program and given council's direction on, and we don't have any major projects coming up for affordable housing that $150,000 would make much of an increment towards. So we really are able to get the grant funds to use in our community and help our homeless population or others that are, are needing to find themselves in assistance to get into home housing.
We can't mingle these funds with first-time home buyer or any of these other programs we have.
Correct. There are very, it is pretty limited. Home funds are very limited on what you can do.
Any more questions for staff? Then we'll open it up for public comment on this matter. Come to the microphone, please.
Good evening, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the city of Lompoc. I didn't actually think that I would have an opportunity to speak this evening because of an issue that I have that directly relates to the home program. As most people don't know, the city of Lompoc conducts inspections of all properties that it funds under the home program. I live at such a building. Over the last five years, I have been inspected 26 times. Ten, that lady, thank you. Wow. And the problem is that the city of Lompoc has adopted a strategy for addressing its homeless population wherein they don't inform the tenant that they can object to being inspected. The notices don't say so. Mr. Penone, during the cake break, told me, when I addressed him about the issue, that was before this meeting tonight, the settlement with me, my name is Marshall Waldau, I was the off-the-issue settlement. But under the home program that you guys are talking about rejoining, the city of Lompoc refuses, let me put it just this way, please convey to your client my offer of settlement wherein the city would stipulate to requiring that all notices requesting inspections of occupied units, one, request consent of tenants for entry, two, inform the tenant of their right to refuse entry, three, specifically state that the unit will not be entered without the express consent, either granted for that inspection, not based upon the term of the lease, in writing or granted in person. While this is not concerned, I would expect a better practice would be to send notices directly to tenants with business reply mail for the purpose of granted consent and also include an opt-in provision in exchange. The city has deemed this to be an unreasonable practice to require. The city, apparently earlier this evening, refused that settlement offer. Is that so awful? Why do you not want to come to those terms if you're worried about the homeless population? This is what you impose upon people merely for accepting the fact that they live in property which has been subsidized by the city of Lompoc. That is discrimination, I'm sorry, that's actually not discrimination. Legally, it's not. Legally, what it does is it places people who live in subsidized housing in a second class of citizenship with respect to their fourth amendment rights to be free of intrusion by the government into their home. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, and people of the city of Lompoc.
Thank you. Any more public comments on the matter? Seeing none, I will close discussion and bring it back to council. Any more discussion or do I have a motion? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move staff recommendation on this.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And any more discussion? Let's vote. And that passes for 01. New business. We now will have a discussion regarding options for animal control services and that will be presented by our deputy city manager, Laurel Doubles.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Protem, council members, staff and members of the public. My name is Laura Doubles and I am the deputy city manager. Thank you for your time and attention tonight. I am here tonight as a directive of the council from the council meetings held on June 20th, 2017 and July 13th, 2017, for staff to return with alternatives for the city to provide animal control services. After much time analysis and effort, staff has found a quality alternative solution to the city's current practice, which also addresses very important budgetary concerns by providing overall operational savings to the city. The city has historically contracted with the county to provide its animal control services. As seen on the screen above, since 2001, the county contract has increased from $75,000 to $323,844 annually, a cumulative increase of 332% over a period of 17 years, or an average increase of 19.5% annually, while the population, which is the figure used for the per capita calculation of the county charges, has only increased by 4.5% from 38,844 to 40,582 people over the same period of time, which is an average increase of only 0.28% annually. As you can see on this chart, in fiscal year 2010 to 11, city staff was able to negotiate a reprieve in rate increases with the county. However, after that year, the trend of uptick in rate increases has noticeably escalated each year since, with no further productive rate negotiations with the county. Due to staff notifying the county to the, of the county, of the city council's direction to pursue alternatives, the rate increases for the next two years were then negotiated to a lower level, but will still increase 3% over the two-year duration. The county refuses to negotiate its rate for more than two years in advance, causing the city uncertainty in each future budget cycle estimations. The services rendered have also been relatively stagnant in amount as well, either staying pretty much the same or actually decreasing, as can be seen by these trend lines in the next couple of slides here. So with such a minute change in population and services, the drastic change in cost is uncorrelated. This next slide shows the total percentage change of 332% over a period of 17 years. The total average percentage change comes to 19.5%. The total average percentage change comes to 19.52% per year for the full 17 years, and then the total average percentage change of 4.02% for the last 10 years. By taking these averages and projecting them out over the next 10 years to exemplify projections of what the city's costs will be if we continue with county contract, this next slide shows a table of these projections with a total variance over 10 years between now and then. By using historical averages, we can be relatively certain that the actual figure will come in somewhere between these two figures at the bottom of the screen. If we do a comparison with what our cumulative costs and potential savings may be between staying in the county contract or going with the new provider, the next slide shows the totals. Again, we can be relatively certain the actual savings will lie somewhere between the two totals at the bottom. This figure is fairly substantial and would allow the city to recognize not only these savings, but the ability to know the exact amount for the next 10 years, which is invaluable in budgeting. In this next slide, I would like to share a conceptual of what the shelter layout would potentially be if the council chooses to go with this option. It would be located at 1700 North H Street, adjacent to the pet lodge that's currently there. It is a good location for the animals, being away from residential so as to minimize noise disturbance, with plenty of room in the back for exercise and/or nature walks. The land is prime for the build-out in that it is already fairly level and has utilities already on the property that would just need to be ran to where they are needed. The city already owns this property, so there is no additional acquisition cost, which greatly helps the overall project cost to build this new facility. There will be a lease payment because it was acquired with FAA funding, but that has already been calculated in the provider's pro forma. The cost of the project has been kept way down due to the ability to use prefabricated metal buildings specifically designed as animal kennels. They are very well-built, fully self-contained, and come with a 25-year warranty, as you can see here. The left side of the screen is an exterior view, and the right side of the screen has an interior view. They basically are delivered and set down on the property, ready to go with some setup. The manufacturer has already quoted the prices with the delivery and setup included, which they provide. The proposal is for two kennel buildings, an administrative building, and two 8-by-10 visiting buildings for possible adoptions. The city will have to do their preparation work as directed by the manufacturer and our building department to adhere to all requirements, but that all should be fairly minimal with the land that has been chosen and researched. The estimated costs, that are estimated but with plenty of research done so as to be fairly close to actual costs, are shown in this final slide. This estimate is all-inclusive of everything staff and the provider has deemed necessary for the build-out of the facility. It is considered an estimate and would be finalized with actual costs, along with a funding plan that staff would return with at a future council meeting if the council so approves. The benefits of having a local provider here in our community are many. The community will have the ability to have exceptional response times and have an overall improvement in services 24 hours a day, seven days a week, by having the provider here. There will also be hiring of local staff, as well as using our local businesses for shelter needs. Our dog licensing program will be done in the city, which also adds substantial convenience. The provider has also expressed the desire to work with many of our community partners and welcomes and expresses plans for many opportunities for community involvement. He wanted to be here tonight, but had an unforeseen urgent situation that made him unable to attend, and apologizes to the council for not being here. Proceeding with staff's recommendation to develop the city's own animal shelter facility and contracting with the operator for animal services will save the city considerable funds over the long term and allow better budgetary control, which is very much needed in the city's current tight fiscal environment. In order to facilitate the build-out and transfer of the shelter, it will be necessary to remain in contract with the county until the shelter is built and ready to operate. Therefore, staff recommends a one-year extension with the county contract with the termination clause as is for 30 days' written notice. The hope is to possibly begin January 1st, 2019, but staff will have a better idea of the actual date upon proceeding with the project and confirming actual milestone and delivery dates. That concludes my presentation, and I am available for any questions.
Do we have any questions for staff at the moment?
I have one.
Councilmember Fager?
Laura, it looks like with the proposal here, there is a recapture of, by the city taking over animal services, is that correct?
Yes.
I'm not sure if you have calculated the recapture possibly from the savings based on the increase with the county, you know, in the future, how many years out we are and will break even.
Right. Well, we do, we will have a debt service on the new infrastructure. Our finance director, he's basically has tried to project out for hopefully a payment of 10 years. After that 10-year period, then that would be paid for, and then there would be even more substantial savings at that point.
Got you. So it'd be financed so as not to further burden our general fund or any other tax bill, is that correct? Now, the other question I have, we have a provider here who's by name. The Plan B would be, once we had the infrastructure and everything in place, and say this service provider, even though they're in contract, or that person by name is not the actual person that stays in contract with us, say he decides to go a different direction, is there a Plan B, or have you, do we know how many people out there are qualified that then with a facility, would it be easier for us to attract another manager sort of, or someone that could run the program?
I can't speak to how many, because it would have to be that we would go out with an RFP to find out, and at that point, we would determine how many qualified applicants we would have for that. If we, if worst-case scenario, we did not get a provider that put in for it, we could always actually staff it in-house at that point.
Thank you.
Seeing no further questions for staff, we'll go ahead and open this up for public comment. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter for three minutes, please come forward to the microphone and do so.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Cece Wellman. I am the executive director of Happy Endings Animal Sanctuary and Solving. As you know, animal services covers the Santa Barbara Valley, and we have been working with them for decades, basically. We know exactly what kind of services they provide. Obviously, their financials is none of our business, but I can tell you firsthand that the quality of care, the quality of public relations that happens, when you take an animal away from someone, there's automatically a defense mechanism. And so if you offer your assistance and you offer your help, you're going to be almost a working partner instead of good cop, bad cop. The quality in the shelter, the quality of food that they give, the quality of care, that is something that really concerns me, because I'm all about the animals first. The amount of elderly people that have to give up their animals because they're unable to care for them, either financially or physically, it's really a big problem. And I think that if we had another contractor, who is to say that they are qualified? Who is going to be the judge of their qualifications? How, who will determine if they are truly animal professionals? Sometimes someone in an animal position says that they are an expert. That most of the time is true on a book-smart-type basis. Boots on the ground, being able to handle an animal, a vicious animal, a scared animal, and most of the time, a scared animal is a vicious animal. And it is a danger, and it needs to be handled very carefully. I can't say enough about the staff and everyone at animal services. Santa Barbara of Santa Maria, and I, Lompoc hasn't renewed their contract. Food costs are very, very high.
Your time is up, so I need you to conclude your comments.
Okay. So, anyway, thank you very much, and I'm always open for any kind of questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Von Doh Renozo. I'm the Santa Barbara County Public Health Director. And to begin with, I really appreciate your concern about cost containment. As a department head, I too always look for opportunities to contain costs, and typically, like you, I rely on fiscal analyses to, as part of my decision-making process. So, given that, I wanted to share with you some concerns I have in reading the council letter. If I could draw your attention to page three, where there is a, there's an analysis that assumes a 331% increase in change from 2001 to 2018. If you remember, beginning 2002, with the incorporation of GOLIDA, the revenue neutrality agreement between GOLIDA and the county was cost recovery for services at 100% cost. At that time, the county developed a per capita methodology for contracts with the cities for animal control services. Given that you are a good partner with us, the department recognized that, right off the bat, 100% cost containment would be very difficult, it would be a hardship. So the Board of Supervisors agreed to subsidize the costs over a four-year period. So that means in year one, it was, the city of Lompoc only had to pay 70%. Year two, 80%. Year three, 90%. And year four, 100%. So all along, the county has been subsidizing animal services. To date, we put in about 37% of the cost for animal services. So I just wanted to point that out to you, the rest of the story, if you will. The other thing is that, so on page six of the agenda item, the $640,000 savings over 10-year period is based on the 4%, that's more realistic, but it doesn't take into account the $500,000 that will be put forth for the capital expense. And to record, the county has always assumed capital expenses. As early as the recent remodel in 2011, the county assumed nearly half a million dollar in the cost without passing that on to the city of Lompoc. And the last point I want to make before my time runs out is, $500,000 to construct a brand-new facility, I would want to say is grossly an underestimation. And my final, final point is, I would be wary of a 10-year contract with no increases, given that you know prices of goods and labor increase. So what's going to be sacrificed in order to maintain that no increase in the contract? So those are some of my concerns. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of city council, residents of Lompoc. I'm Jan Glick. I'm the director of county animal services for the last 19 years, the course of the analysis there. And what our public health director relayed to you is very accurate. The county has a process, or the public health department has had a process of subsidizing all of our city contracts, and we did enter into the per capita methodology to try to be more even-handed. This year, for our upcoming renewals, we proposed two-year renewals at 1.5% increase to all the cities, and every city except for Lompoc was very interested in the two-year program, and actually, three cities asked for longer term. So we're sorry to see that Lompoc is not as interested in the program. We have been committed throughout the years to provide good service, and we cover all the mandates that you're now going to be taking on. And that includes the requirement to provide a stray animal shelter. I see we had the kennels there for dogs. I'm not sure about other species. You're required to provide a rabies control program, a dog licensing program, provision of prompt and necessary medical care, that is extremely expensive, I'm sure if you have your own pets, you know that, and spay and neuter of all dogs and cats adopted. By operating three community animal centers, we're able to provide an economy of scale, and we move our resources to go where they're needed within the county. We are a local resource. We are located in the city of Lompoc. On the scope of work attachment, under page eight, under exhibit A, there are references to response by county animal services, and this is your agreement with your contractor. So I'm assuming it's a typo, but we just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I think if you go to that outside contractor, you won't be having county animal services officers responding. And as Director Doh Renozo mentioned, the cities have never been asked to participate in our capital projects, and the one we did when we improved the Lompoc shelter just a few years ago, and we renovated the entire office area, created a medical room, created an intake room, created two new open housing rooms for cats, was almost a half a million dollars just for renovating an existing facility.
Go ahead and extend her time a bit to finish her.
So the, we did also make the facility ADA accessible and added a public restroom as part of that project, and the project did include $24,000 from Lompoc CBDG funds. The only other comment I wanted to make is, when you provide veterinary services, you must have a premises permit, and you must have a veterinarian associated with your facility. So all of these things are very costly, and so we just hope you're taking an open-eyed look at the proposal before you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Dori V. Alone. I'm a 30-year animal welfare professional and the operations manager for Santa Barbara County Animal Services. I do want to speak in support, of course, of maintaining the relationship that we have. Wanted to just point out a couple of the really important services that we have to offer. First, disaster response. We have a fabulous team of 11, now more than ever, highly-trained, experienced officers countywide to be able to respond to disasters. They're backed up with support staff, volunteers, nonprofit organizations that help us. We have relationships with the Office of Emergency Management- We have relationships with the Office of Emergency Management and local responders. Those are important relationships to have in critical times. Jan mentioned the other animals, and we actually... While you might think of dogs and cats initially, we got 233 non-dog and cat animals from the city last year: rabbits, guinea pigs, a lot of hamsters. A lot of hamsters. I'm not sure what that was about. Hens, roosters, reptiles, wildlife, small livestock. So, those are animals that also need the same level of care and compassion and forethought when you're running an animal shelter. Thirdly, I wanted to point out our efforts with public safety. We're really proud of our collaborative efforts with the city's safety officer. We work closely with you on the vicious and restricted dog ordinance. There's probably two or three hearings a month, and we are committed to making sure that we have a safe community, and that we can follow up with these animals that, if they are released back into the community, we're committed to. I appreciate the opportunity. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name is Dr. Cynthia Allen. I am a Lampoke resident. I am an Animal Services volunteer and a CAPA board member. I am also an elected official and a manager at a special district. I have been on both sides of the governmental project process, and I understand how difficult these decisions can be. I am concerned by the assertions presented in the memo regarding the services provided by the county. You cannot use Tables 3 through 6 as proof that services are being reduced. You want average days reported to go down. You want euthanasia rates to go down. These numbers going down are an indication that the current program is working. Animals are leaving the shelter alive. Using these positive achievements in the negative is a disservice to those who dedicate themselves to saving these animals. The positive trend lines in Tables 7 through 9 demonstrate that services provided to the city are actually increasing. What isn't shown on those tables are the additional benefits provided by the nonprofits who partner with Animal Services. Thanks to those partners, microchips are provided to every animal who comes through the Lampoke Shelter, and dogs and cats who need it receive behavioral training. I am also concerned by the design of the proposed shelter. From my experience at La Paz, I can tell you that 19 kennels are not enough. Chain link between kennels does not seem adequate to keep the dogs from getting at each other. There also seems to be a lack of facilities for animals other than dogs and cats, such as rabbits and chickens. Where is the cat isolation area? Is there a medical clinic? Within the city limits, Animal Services rescues owls, hawks, raccoons. Where are they going to be housed until they can be transferred to wildlife facilities? In my professional opinion, the construction budget of $500,000 is not adequate to build a facility large enough to safely house all of the animals for which the city will be responsible. In closing, I would like to suggest that the Lampoke City Council request a more detailed budget from the contractor before severing ties with Santa Barbara County Animal Services. You need to verify that you're evaluating comparable services before you make a final decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Marginek, a city of Lampoke resident and resident of CAPA. And CAPA is a unique organization to the shelter in Lampoke. So, we are dedicated. Our entire mission is just to the Lampoke animals, or the shelter animals. So, this county works with other organizations, but their missions can go through all three shelters. CAPA is strictly this shelter. So, that is one partnership that, when people donate to CAPA, it goes just here to Lampoke. And this is a Lampoke shelter. So, you might see it as a county property, run by the county. I see it as a volunteer, as a city shelter, because the staff, the volunteers are all city residents. So, we have volunteers that fall in love with animals and buy homes here in the city because they want to have a dog. So, that's a very important thing. I've personally given tours to Girl Scout troops who come through and raise money for us. Boy Scout organizations come and donate projects for the bunny exercise area. And even Caitlin Chewie, our lovely Flower Festival queen, this year, her senior project was La La Palooza, which was a benefit for the shelter animals. So, we are definitely a community organization. So, and where else in the city can you find seniors from high school working alongside retirees or people that are still working? So, we have all age ranges. So, I don't want to hear anyone say, "There's nothing to do here in Lampoke," because you can come and volunteer at the shelter. So, and Cindy already said, but you really need to request a more detailed budget analysis because Petaluma City Council dropped the contract with the organization that you are looking at. So, with Petaluma Animal Services, the charter group, last night, they chose a group that splintered off from charter. So, the council was unhappy with and concerned about the current character, and also not willing to go with a third option that was a non-local entity. So, and that is important for the Lampoke city, because it is a city-community shelter. So, and I wanted to read this quote real quick. From the Daily Journal and the Yukaya paper, "The Mendocino County Executive Office released details about a bid it received from the County Animal Shelter that it rejected as inadequate and incomplete. Petaluma Animal Services Foundation, the sole bidder for the County Animal Shelter, has been given several opportunities since August 2, 2015, to improve its proposal, which ultimately didn't make the mark when it came to its proposed operational budget, staffing, marketing, and operational plans." So, there are a lot of questions about security, about other animals, about the quality of life for the animals. And so, this is all you should take into consideration when looking at another bid. And of course, I don't have a job with the county, right? I am a city volunteer and resident, and that's what my concern is. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Jill Anderson, co-founder of Shadows Fund. We're a local animal rescue and nonprofit that functions here in Lampoke. And we have a lot of adopters and supporters and volunteers who are residents here in this community. And we've spoken to many of them at length, and I'd like to think that I'm here to represent what's on the minds of those folks in this town. Firstly, Lampoke Animal Services has had a relationship with the county for over a decade and a half, and they've got a good track record of doing a good job. And so, if you're going to entertain the idea of severing that relationship, it has to be based more on just... More than just the bottom line of an annual contract. And when I talk to folks, what's first and foremost on everyone's mind is that this proposal that has been presented by Charter Services leaves more questions and answers, namely, the budget. And it's kind of redundant. It's been brought up many times, but the proposed budget does not seem nearly adequate to run a robust animal services program, particularly when you're not being subsidized by the county, and when you're not a nonprofit able to raise funds. Jeff Charter has a good track record of animal welfare, but he's also running his current operation as a nonprofit, and he can raise money. Charter Services LLC is a for-profit. So, without the ability to raise additional donations or bring in county resources, how on earth is he going to make up that deficit? Folks really want to know that in this community. The second, as has also already been stated, is the cost to construct a facility that's adequate for all the species that it will serve. That figure does not... We've built our own sanctuary, and I can tell you that that number is not adequate to construct an appropriate animal care facility. So, folks are very concerned about that. And then also, the wisdom of signing a 10-year contract with an entity that you have no relationship with or a track record. That just seems ill-advised on the surface. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I think I'm up for a record three times in one night. You all have business experience. Would any of you have a sole supplier that could dictate prices to you? I kind of doubt it. I started attending council meetings pretty regularly in April of 2008. And about this time every year, either when I was on the dais or when I was listening, the council was looking at the average, I think, is 19% increase. Any of you have anything out there that you've had a 19% increase on, year after year after year? I think not. The city has a finite amount of funds. Typically, the same funds that are used to fund police and fire are used to fund animal control. So, at a certain point, you have to say to yourself, "Are my funds being well-spent, or perhaps can I do it at a more reasonable cost?" The staff report is quite detailed, but it does say that we're going to go back and we're going to get a finite bid. So, before you actually take a final action, you will know exactly what it's going to cost. What you're being asked to do here tonight is to move forward in that direction and see if everything that is promised is true. Some of you will recall that I have twice talked to County Animal Services about a program that's run in British Columbia that has been very successful and has reduced the number of animals in shelters up there by about 95%, and also dramatically reduced their euthanasia numbers. That's very important to me, because that program returns animals to their owners the same day. They don't go down to the kennel and sit there and wait. They know who the owners are. They're chipped. They have a license, and they take them home. And yet, the county... The gentleman from British Columbia actually came all the way down here and made a presentation, and the county wasn't even interested. I was very disappointed. That is something I hope we would look at, and that is a great cost reducer, which will undoubtedly make our contractor much happier over the long term. So, tonight, I would urge you to take this step, to go forward, and see if the costs are right, and the numbers are right, and everything is correct. Because we will never know, and we will be... Continue to be held hostage as we have been in the past, and 19% is pretty horrendous. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments? Seeing no one else rise, I will close public comment and return it to council for discussion. Councilmember Vega.
Questions for Laura, if we can. Bring her back up. Laura, again, that presentation that Mr. Lynn brought up, as far as the direction, and as far as to actually find out exactly what this is going to cost, that is the direction that's being asked tonight. Is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Part of the recommended direction, to find out where we're at, and find out if your costs are close, and how much they might go up if it takes a couple of years to build or something like that. Or is that... These numbers, have they already been vetted?
I would like to say that we do have a pro forma that has the whole budget for all of the costs that the provider is proposing. So, I've done enough work on it to know that my figures should be pretty accurate. The reason that I had stated that was because I can't give you exact cost until... If this council wants me to move forward on this, then I can go ahead and give you the actual costs, and what our plan would be for the financing and all of that, for funding.
I guess my other question would be, it's been mentioned that there are a variety of animals that weren't mentioned in the proposal. Was that all part of the pro forma?
Yes.
Not in numbers, but in animals? You know, to find out if there were different species, chickens, and, you know, everything on Old McDonald's Farm. I mean, is that part of it?
Yeah. The administrative offices will actually have a whole separate areas for cats, as well as other animals that they were talking about. So, it is something that he's already considered.
Now, again, the recommendation for a 10-year contract, pros and cons here? I mean, where did that come from?
The 10-year contract is actually more really for our benefit, because budgeting for a 10-year period is much easier, especially with our current climate. With the county, we don't know... We only know two years in advance of what their rates would be to go up. After that, we don't know. I can tell you that the last two years, it was over 11%. So, we have a really hard time right now trying to budget in. We're looking for every dollar, as you know. And so, having a 10-year contract would also very much assist us in budgeting. But it also gives the provider the stability to be here, and hopefully, we can pass this 10 years and pay our debt service off, and pay that whole infrastructure off.
Again, the bid for a 10-year contract and the numbers projected, without any additional increases, was that presented properly? I mean...
Yes, it was, because...
That came from where, if you don't mind me asking?
Well, he actually provided a pro forma to show all of the salaries for staffing, what all of his costs would be. And then, what I did is, I kind of... Because we are also going to have an increase in rent because of the CPI plus one that the FAA is fair market value, and that's what they normally do. So, I went ahead and I added that into the contract. And basically, that's the number that would, you know, work for us and for him. And I did purposely make it a little bit higher, even though it still is less than the county, just so that we can go ahead and project 10 years out, so it kind of averages out over the 10-year time. That maybe it's a little high right now, but it will definitely be lower in the long run, within 10 years.
Now, the comparable with the existing building that's there with County Animal Services versus the square footage of the proposed new facility and building, are there any comparables there? Or is it a more condensed facility, or is it just as expansive with the same amount of area that could actually accommodate the amount of animal services that are needed?
Yeah. And honestly, I don't know. That would be more of a comparison. I'd have to find out what the county has. But I haven't toured that facility.
I think that would probably be a good number to compare to, to make sure that we're on solid ground here.
Sure. And I just want to mention that, though, that these units that we're looking to buy, the infrastructure, the actual kennel buildings, can be arranged for however many we would need, too. So, that was just an estimate for what... How many, in the reports that they said they take intake for animals, the boarding days and all of that, this provider said that this would basically be enough kennels. Now, if we find out that, okay, maybe we don't have as many as they do, then we would have to do some further analysis to see, okay, maybe we need to buy a building that has a little bit more kennels or not.
And this contractor seems to be able to handle, as far as you're saying, any expansive services, exactly what the city needs.
Absolutely. This is a very qualified provider. He has been in this industry for over 13 years. He... His shelter actually has, it's like a 97% to 99% no-kill. He's actually assisted in devastations, like in New Orleans, when they had the hurricane. He's gone down and helped with animal rescue down there. So, he is very caring for animals as well.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, considering we got all this information Friday night, and here it is Tuesday night, it's pretty hard to digest all of this. It would have seemed to me that the county would actually be saving money if we took this upon ourselves. You know? You wouldn't have to serve as Lampoke, so you wouldn't have the expense of being in Lampoke. I don't find it likely that the cost of services from the county will go down if we renew for a year or two. But on the other hand, I'm not willing to throw the county to the dogs at this point, because, you know, four days to make a decision like this in my eyes isn't enough. The pro forma is the one thing that I think's important, and the key player isn't here. Would I be willing to take this action tonight? Probably not. Would I like to see it maybe in August or September, when we could put a pro forma together a little bit better, and possibly review and hear from the person that would provide the services? services? I don't know. I mean, as a full-service city, I would love to be able to do this in Lompoc on our own. But do I feel as though it's the best option at this time? I'm really torn. Like I say, four days is just making it very hard for me. The one thing I wouldn't miss about having our own dog, you know, our own animal services here is the over-the-fence Nazi mentality that's been going on here for years. Would probably go away, but I would really like to put this on an agenda in August, I think. It just, you know, in my opinion, I just, there's too much here.
Councilmember Vega.
You know, I'd like us to explore and move forward with the options to see what you can come back with. I think that, I'd like to make a motion to move forward with, at least number one here, we can renew, but we can also, what is the financial impact of not renewing for two years? Okay? Extending, and you do your homework, and, and come back with us with a exact proposal, just as John Lynn had mentioned. I don't think there's any loss there. It's not about a future agendized item. It's about coming back, coming forward with the actual pro forma and pinpointed numbers to see what we can actually do. And that, by then, then we can come back and you can compare square footage and you can compare stalls. You can have this all coming back to us so that we can know that we can do it apples for apples. Kind of comparable.
Sure.
So, Councilman Mosby's there, but I, that's actually what I'd like to do. I'd like to move forward with recommendation number one. It looks like it goes into number two. I'm not sure that we're ready to do number two yet, as an incorporated to go in there and sign a contract with someone else. I'm not sure if somebody wants to add to that motion to see what we can do to moving forward so they can come back and see if it's a viable option and actually something concrete that we can make happen. I think the city, sometimes what we do is we hesitate moving forward on our own, and we're always, we always have a crutch. People, I think, to stand on our own is, there's nothing wrong with that if we can do it.
So are you complete with that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Councilmember Mosby.
Before I contemplate the second for Councilmember Vega, I just, a couple of questions. Has the, the potential contractor negotiated with any veterinary services locally? Is there, because there was a mention of that.
Not at this time. But he does have it in his pro forma.
Okay. And I want to thank you for bringing this forward because one thing you did do is, is a concern that we had was that this next year, counties were going to be up here, and the county's going to appear. So I want to thank the county as well for negotiating and keeping it down here. It's significantly important for our community. I know you guys have budgetary, I've been watching your budget hearings as well, but we're struggling even more so than you guys are. So I would appreciate, you know, you guys working with us as well, that one and a half percent is significant. Shows that you guys really are trying to work with us, and we, nobody has said what you guys are doing is substandard in any way, shape, or form. We appreciate that and all the volunteer effort that goes on at the shelter. But our, one of our concerns is that bottom line. And, you know, there, there are other numbers that are out there, and you guys get twenty-one and a half percent of the property tax that's, that's collected here in the city of Lompoc. So maybe some of that that you're considering as subsidy is just some of the money being redirected back our direction, so. I'd like to think of it that way as well, and we appreciate the assistance the county remembering us way up north here, so. I think there are a couple other questions there, and it'd been nice to have the contractor here, and I think it would've been a little bit more one-on-one with it. I appreciate you having this on the table for us because it does give us some leverage, and I think you guys understand where we're coming from, everybody out there, with us knowing what we need to do. The, and I know there's significant energy and effort put forward in this, and I'm kind of leaning like Councilmember Starbuck. I believe there's more questions. I think there's more time that the public wants to hit us with. I've had a small amount of outreach, and there's, there's a significant amount of outreach here tonight. We were still getting emails late tonight. So I'd be willing to move forward with item number one, because doing number one would still allow us to, to come back with item number two. And as Councilmember Starbuck said, down the road, what did you want, August?
I feel August would be a good time. I don't want to put the can way down the trail here, you know.
Make sure we, we have an opportunity for the contractor to be here as well. It'd be nice for him to be able to answer some questions. Hopefully, he'll watch the meeting and see there were some significant questions brought forward by members of the public that I think that it would be best for him to answer as well. So with that, I would, I would second Councilmember Vega's movement going forward. And I'd on top of that to bring back the number two in August, I believe is what you said, right?
I'm, I'm fine with August. I mean, whatever the council would desire, I think August would be a good time. It would give us time to review it all.
Mayor, Mr. Council, and councilmembers, if I might, also, our new city manager starts July thirtieth. If you wanted to involve him in the process, that is something to take into consideration on the timing.
Give a proverbial bone to chew on, so to say, right?
Yeah.
Hey, so with that, just a minor amendment to yours, adding on to bring back number two in August.
I got you. And you know, basically, it's budget, it's a budgetary item for me, okay? I think that all of us, we need to hang strong and not, not lean on someone else so hard for everything, okay? We're never going to stabilize our budget, and I think that's one of our common goals here for the city is to make sure that we're, we're on par here before we move forward and create more debt, something that's coming out of the general fund.
Yes.
So do you accept his addition to your...
Yes. That was a long way of saying yes.
Okay.
Is that enough that we need for...
I, I would just add that the timing for August means really it would be, the report would be due before the new city manager pretty much gets back.
Right. So, so how about September, end of September, last meeting in September?
Yes.
You guys keep changing it. You guys are confusing me. Gosh. Thanks, Teresa. Okay? Thank you. Yes.
I'm going to make one more request to add to this motion. You're going to love me for this one. I heard as part of the county's discussion that there were communities accepting longer terms at the one-point-five percent. If that is true, I would like to add that you investigate how many years out at that one-point-five percent we could sign a contract, because again, your argument was for the longer the term, the better. And there are many things that the county is providing that I think we're going to have a hard time finding and investing in infrastructure. I'd rather spend, see the half a million go to bigger needs within the police department or the fire department if we were going to invest in infrastructure. So with the indulgence of your motion to also investigate potentially longer term of the one-point-five percent contract with the county.
I think that would be prudent. There's nothing wrong with that.
Sure.
Yes.
Thank you. So, Madam Clerk, does the motion make sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Let's vote. That is a four-zero-one. All right. We're almost in the final stretch, people. Hang out with us. Item number fourteen, approval of revolution, resolutions numbers sixty-one ninety-five parentheses eighteen, sixty-one ninety-six parentheses eighteen, and sixty-one ninety-seven parentheses eighteen relating to placing cannabis tax ballot measures before city voters at the November sixth, twenty-eighteen general municipal election and submittal of the arguments for against in preparation of an impartial analysis and submittal of rebuttal arguments respectively presented by our city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. As you know, back in May, you unanimously decided to put forward a ballot measure to create a cannabis tax. The cannabis tax that you wanted to put forward is on page two of the staff report. For cultivators, it'd be a maximum of one percent of gross receipts. For retail operations, it'd be a maximum of six percent of gross receipts. For non-medical transactions, for manufacturing distributors, there's a flat rate of fifteen thousand dollars if the net income is less than two million dollars and thirty thousand dollars if the net income is more than, or two million dollars or more. You decided to not have testing facilities taxed, and micro businesses were going to be taxed in, in the same way as the other established taxes that I said, but with a maximum of six percent, six percent of the proceeds. Tonight, you have before you basically three decisions you have to make. There's three resolutions you have to adopt if you want to. The first resolution, sixty-one ninety-five, the important thing to focus on there is page one is the question. The, the question that will actually be on the ballot. If you want to change that, we can discuss that. Just understand that it may be, it may seem it's worded kind of not as, as well as it could be grammatically, but we only have seventy-five words. The state only gives us seventy-five words, so we, we have to jam as much information as we can, and we're obligated to put in how much tax it could generate, and we need to put in the rates. And so I did the best, I started with a hundred words and took out an A and a two and got down to seventy-five. I think it, maybe it's seventy-four. The next resolution is the resolution that deals with, and that resolution will have the ordinance attached, the ordinance that will be on the ballot. The second resolution is sixty-one ninety-six, and it basically provides the second, the second point of decision-making you have. There are arguments that can be provided. There's a statutory schedule as to priorities for those arguments. If the council itself, excuse me, if the council itself wanted to be one of the presenters of an argument and anyone else submitted an argument, the council would be, the council's argument would be on the ballot. If you wanted to do that as a group, you would need to do that at a council meeting. So my suggestion is if you want to have the council provide an argument, I would suggest you appoint a subcommittee of two to do that argument. You don't need to do that, but if you want to, you have that availability. The third resolution is rebuttal arguments. I know you're all familiar with that. When you see your ballots, there's the pro argument and then the counter argument. You aren't required to have a rebuttal argument. The statutes, the election code provides you the option to allow rebuttal arguments. If you don't want to have rebuttal arguments, then don't apply, don't approve sixty-one ninety-seven, resolution sixty-one ninety-seven. If you do approve it and you also decide that you want to have a subcommittee of two of, of your members provide the argument, those two same members would provide the rebuttal argument. And with that, I think that's all I have to say.
Would it be okay to break it down by each resolution in order to take a vote so that we...
Sure.
Have full discussion? Okay.
Sure.
All right. Does council agree that we should? I see heads nodding. Okay. So let's take number sixty-one ninety-five parentheses eighteen, the wording and the ordinance resolution. Do we have any questions or concerns on that one? And after we discuss, I'll open for public comment on that. Seeing no questions, anyone like to make a public comment on the wording for the ballot Seeing no public comment, I will close that and return it to council and either have more discussion or entertain a motion. Councilmember Vega.
I think that unless council has a different opinion, we should move forward without the rebuttal, which is resolution sixty-one nine-seven, so that we do not have to respond, we don't have to do an ad hoc committee.
We're, we're only discussing sixty-one nine-five eighteen right now.
All right. Gotcha.
Just, just the tax measure ballot.
So I don't have a rebuttal. Okay, got you, man. So I'm moving forward. I was almost done.
It's okay. No, no, you were trying to skip right to the end, but we have to make a decision about... The question is, are you good with the language that has been presented as the...
I guess, I guess my one question to Joe, since they're clarifying, straightening me out here, is the rebuttal arguments, if we don't have a rebuttal argument, is that still part of the first resolution?
No.
No.
Okay. That takes, that takes that verbiage out of there. Is that correct?
We will discuss that after we discuss ninety-six.
The, the meeting chair is trying to segregate it to make it easier. So we're just, we're just focusing on resolution sixty-one ninety-five right now.
Got you, man. Okay. No questions.
That's clear. Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move that we adopt resolution sixty-one ninety-five parentheses eighteen.
And I'll give you a second on that. Any other discussion? Let's vote. And that passes four-zero-one. Now we will discuss sixty-one ninety-six eighteen, which is the portion where we choose whether or not to place arguments for the tax measure on the ballot. Correct? And if we do that, the recommendation is that there be an ad hoc committee to write that argument from council. So does council have any questions on this or comments before I open to public comment? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'd like to see the city attorney write it rather than us, two of the council people. But if it goes to the council, I would suggest possibly you and Mayor Lingle, since he's not here.
Especially since he voted against it from the beginning.
Yeah, I guess.
I'm always thinking of him.
I, I, I'm not sure if you were being kidding or not, but I really shouldn't write the argument because I have to write the impartial analysis.
Yeah.
Well, I've already included Councilmember Osborne and Mayor Lingle in the other part then.
Okay. Before I take a second on that, I need to open it for public comment.
Gosh, isn't he out of line?
No. He's making a recommendation. We'll ask him to make it a formal motion after I open it to public comment. Are there any public comments on this matter? Seeing none, we will close and bring it back. And would you like to make that a formal motion?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you. And would you like to second that? Oh.
I'll second it.
Awesome. Thank you for your second. Any other discussion? Then let's vote.
Before you vote, may I just say?
Yeah.
You can't require someone to be the person who's going to be writing the argument. So if you do what you did, you're going to have one person write the argument, is my guess.
Can, can I modify with an alternate that if Mayor Lingle does this, and then Councilmember Starbuck folds in his alternate?
Oh, no way.
You may ask a question.
You know, why do we have to have an argument, Joe? And what are the pros and cons against that? I don't think they understand what you're asking.
The council does not have to appoint anyone. The council does not have to spin an argument.
Yeah. Councilmember Starbuck, do you understand that we don't have to do a rebuttal?
I got it.
If you don't, then either someone else in the public will write an argument for it, and if they don't, then there may just be an argument against it.
So what happens then?
Then the only thing that will get published is an argument against it.
We lose out the opportunity to present the argument as to why we recommended the tax measure be on. And I'd, I'd rather not lose out on that opportunity and have someone else write it for us or write a rebuttal. That's my personal stance.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure Councilmember Starbuck understood what he was saying.
Thank you for your concern.
Do we have an alternate?
All right.
Thank you. I will second that adjustment. Any other discussion? Let's vote. That passes four-zero-one. And finally, sixty-one nine-seven eighteen. And this is whether or not a rebuttal argument is put on the ballot measure or not. So this one's completely elective.
Correct.
And if we don't do it, does that mean someone else can?
No.
There you go.
If, if you don't approve this resolution, there will be no rebuttal arguments on the ballot.
So there you go. Does that answer your question?
I think I understand that one.
Awesome.
Do I get to, do I get a second on that or not? No?
So we have a motion on that. Let me open to public comment. Is there anyone here concerned who would like to state anything otherwise regarding having a rebuttal or not? Seeing no public comment, I will close the floor and take a second if there is one.
There actually doesn't need to be any motion if you're not going to adopt this resolution.
Okay, there we go. So we're not going to adopt that part of the resolution. So...
Understood.
We are done with that, item number fourteen, and we will move on to written communications. City Clerk?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Thank you. We will also open oral communications one more time. This is for a two-minute period.
Mayor Protem?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
We also needed you to, we needed the council to take an action on one D. It's on, on the agenda.
Authorized supplemental appropriations.
Oh, there we go. Oh, there we go. All right, and that's... Do I have a motion on that one? Councilmember Starbuck.
I'll go ahead and move that we authorize supplemental appropriations of $20,000 to the clerk for the election.
I'll second.
All right. Thank you for catching that.
Ms. Galavan caught that.
Thank you, Ms. Galavan, for catching that. Any further discussion? Let's vote. And that passes 4-0-1. Anything else I missed? It was a long agenda, and I tried to give our new city manager really large auto allowance, so thank you for keeping me accountable. So back to oral communications for two minutes on any subject regarding a city matter. Seeing no one rise, I will close oral communications, and we will do council requests. We'll start with Councilmember Vega.
No council, well, you know what? I do have one council request. The comment mentioned for Ryan Park as far as the tennis courts seems to me that we should probably have someone move forward to make sure that damage doesn't occur to the tennis courts again. It seemed like it's a pretty valid point. Seems like to have city property and have people that are on top of it regardless of the deposit, it doesn't seem like it's a good policy to allow it to happen again. You know, when there can be probably a redirection of placement there. I'm not sure that we're just so tied up with space out there. So basically, maybe we can make, see, Teresa, if something can be done out there, a council request as far as for the tennis courts. I think that was a pretty, I'm not sure if there's a commissioner, a committee, or somebody who has adopted those courts out there that's maintaining them, or they're just tennis players out there that are just, you know, they're being put out because of the damage on the courts after that last, that last group that stayed there. Not sure if there's something we can do there.
There is a group of volunteers that did come in and help, as many volunteers do in our community with different projects, and they did help with the tennis courts. So they were the ones that were very concerned about the damage that was done. As we mentioned earlier, we can certainly talk with the organizers of the AIDS Life Cycle Ride and see how we might be able to accommodate all their needs and the space available and not have any damage, you know, in the future.
Right, right. I think it would be, it would be something that would be appreciated when, for the recreation facilities here in the city.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Ms. Galavan, I guess one of the questions, I'll tag on with Councilmember Vega here. With the Flower Festival this weekend, are we having commercial booths and vendor booths and all that in those tennis courts also now?
I don't, I think most of those functions go into the front grass area, and then the carnivals on the parking lot. So different venues use different areas of the park that they agree upon in advance. And, you know, damages do happen to facilities sometimes when you have rental groups that are there, and then we do get the deposit to go ahead and repair them. So for example, a festival, maybe there's some damage to a sprinkler, or when we did Insight Mission to Mars, we had a little bit of damage to some lights at the airport, but we take care of it. You know, we work with our partners to take care of it. So we'll look to the future and make sure that we are working with them about the tennis courts. And I understand whenever a volunteer group puts in volunteer hours and donations from the community, it's really discouraging when they see something like that happen. And it was not an intentional message that we were disrespecting all the hard work they've done at all, and we will get it repaired.
I understand all this, but I think one of the easy solutions here, you said it yourself earlier, and I wasn't aware of it, that it requires a special paint and there's special preparation. And when there's that much involved in it, maybe it should be used only for what it's designed to do. You know, I mean, it's like, the footprint is not that big as compared to what the fallout is when something does go wrong. So maybe it just is a general policy with our parks people, when we do a rental, we just lock the tennis courts up for that period.
So are you making a council request to?
No, just a council suggestion on this.
Okay. Mr. Vega, were you complete with your comments and requests and meeting announcements?
Yeah, I just wish that, like I say, was a little bit more affirmative action to maintain what the facility is for. I get it. I don't think the tennis courts are really meant to be rented out, so that was what my comment was. I actually feel for the people that are utilizing it, so I don't think it's a rental area, but, you know, it's just, that's basically where I was going. Along with you, Councilman Starbuck, I think you concur.
Well, I do concur with that. I just, I don't want to get into the, well, it's a baseball field, so it can't be used for soccer-type, you know, debate on it tonight, but the tennis courts are, and they've always been a locked entity. You know, they've been fenced and opened, and there's special lighting, and it just has always been, I had just assumed for tennis. I didn't know we were using them for other things.
City Attorney.
We're starting to go beyond the discussion. So either we're gonna have a council request to bring back the discussion of whether or not to use the tennis court for anything but tennis, or we're gonna just stop talking and we're gonna understand your suggestions.
Okay, I'll make that suggestion. We bring it back as a council request so we can discuss the tennis court rental policy.
And I'll give you a second.
I'll discuss it.
So that was our third. Good. Councilmember Mosby.
We recently received, May 31st, 2018, a, from the planning division for Mr. Halverson, he's gone, about lighting at Riverbend Park. And I'm not ready to make a motion to bring back for full discussion of that, but maybe the information officer could put a copy of this report out. I don't know how many people saw it or whether the public totally saw it, but I think it'd be important that the public, maybe I need to make a motion that we put this out so the public fully gets this out there so they can see what potential options are for us. Would that be something that you could do through the information officer, or is that something you need a motion from me to request that this document, I don't know if you saw it?
Yeah, we can take a look at the memo and see if there's a place that we can put that on the website to share with people that might be interested.
Because a lot of the public didn't get a chance and opportunity to see this, and I would like to hear more from the people about this and to see what input they have and what direction we need to move forward with on that, or if any direction at all. So if they could get out there, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Starbuck.
Well, thank you. I have no reports, but I would like to make an announcement that, just a reminder, Friday, the 29th of June is the Lompoc Alumni Car Cruise. It starts at 5:00 in the parking lot here, 10 bucks, and it's always fun.
Before I discuss meetings I attended and community events, I said I would bring back the potential of not having a July 3rd council meeting, so I will entertain the discussion of whether or not we actually have a July 3rd meeting.
Teresa's gonna, I'm sorry. Teresa, are you gonna double up on us?
No, I don't think the next one's too bad. Our city clerk says we'll be okay.
So I got a second.
Third.
And a third. So council has agreed that as long as you don't overburden the second meeting in July, it seems we're okay with canceling July 3rd. That being said, everyone should buy tickets to attend our July 4th fireworks event. Please come out and enjoy that. I attended the Census 2020 regional meeting on behalf of the community and welcomed everyone to the Lompoc Valley. Also attended the Coffee with Bob with our Economic Development Chair, Jeremy Ball. And the interesting things that were discussed were the issues at Ryan Park, the loss of the dog show, and the reduced staffing at the police department. So continued concerns being brought to our community about items we really are aware of. I attended the Utility Commission in my council rotation, and I also attended the Flower Festival Coronation Ball this weekend, and congratulations to Caitlin Chewie for being crowned this year's queen. There will be a, oh, and thank you to the Beautification Committee. They did an amazing job on the stretch of ocean between I and J in front of the Lompoc Valley Chamber of Commerce. It looks lovely. Those of you going out to attend the festival parade this Saturday, please be careful of that area, and don't step on the lovely new plants that have been planted. So mentioning that, we do have the Flower Festival this weekend, and we have the parade on Saturday, so please, one and all, come out and participate in that. I mentioned the July 4th fireworks show. And then there is a fundraiser for Domestic Violence Solutions on Friday, June 29th, at the Hilton Garden Inn. It's an evening of smooth jazz. And those tickets are $40, and you can call 805-736-2122 to buy tickets. The other thing that's going on in our community is district election information sessions are continuing this week. We have one, District One, Wednesday, June 20th at 6:00 PM at Gersman Gallery. There's one on Thursday for District Four at 6:00 PM at the Dewey's Community Center. And then there was an additional one added on June 26th at 6:00 PM at the Lompoc Gardens Community Center. And then finally, in case you didn't notice, on our consent calendar, we approved our election calendar, and that means that as of July 16th through August 10th, the window for applying to run for city council or mayor opens up. So you have from July 16th to August 10th, if you are interested in running for city council or the mayor position, nomination papers and candidate statements are available. You contact our city clerk, and she will inform you of what the process is and give you all the paperwork and show you how to go through the process. So I encourage anyone who's interested in our local politics to consider that and reach out to our city clerk. And lastly, on a very sad note, I wanna say condolences to the family of Richard Jacoby. He once upon a time was our prior city council member and mayor, and he passed away on June 3rd, and he did some pretty amazing things for our community by helping bring the campus for Hancock and helped build our library in 1969. So I just wanted the public to be aware that we lost a wonderful civil, civic servant, and we're going to miss him, but he leaves quite a legacy. With that being said, I will adjourn the meeting. The Lompoc City Council will adjourn to a regular meeting at 6:30 PM on Tuesday, July 3rd, 2018, and thank you.
No, July 17th.
17th. Oh, look at that. You caught me. I was just reading. All right, July 17th.